I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the July 23 meeting of the Board of Selectmen. We're going to start with a motion to approve the bills, the payrolls, and the warrants.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. We're going to approve the minutes of the July 9, 2019, meeting.
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. We have announcements. Does anyone have any announcements this evening? I'll just make a couple that we attended the groundbreaking for the Beal Elementary School yesterday morning. It was well-attended and interesting to watch the construction happening in the background while the speaking program was going on. So that was an exciting event. And then last night, there were awards for the firefighters where many of our town firefighters were honored, and five new members of the call-in volunteer class were welcomed to the department. So two really great events, community events, yesterday. And that brings us to the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Chairperson Cassavant. Just have several announcements for the Board and for the public this evening. The first is related to the Pay As You Throw program. As you all know, we switched haulers to Waste Management effective July 1 of 2019. There have been some bumps in the road. I did want to report that Monday and Tuesday of this week's collections have been collected on time and without any issue. I do want to read into the record a statement that Town Manager Mizikar made last Friday, just for all those watching as well as for the Board's knowledge. And again, this is written by Town Manager Mizikar. "I wanted to provide an update on solid waste collections, given the performance the last few weeks. Town officials and I met again with Waste Management this morning, which was last Friday. As a result of this meeting, Waste Management will have additional trucks, increasing from four to five trucks on each route each day. As you will see, the Thursday route is disproportionate to other routes, and it takes longer to get to them. Therefore, additional resources will be provided Thursdays to ensure that is completed on time. At some point in the future, the routes may be adjusted to optimize the daily workload, but this will be fully communicated in detail far in advance of that occurring. On Thursday, July 18, with the performance issues, there were a number of intervening factors causing the route to not be completed. A truck on the route had mechanical issues, as well as there was long wait times for two trucks waiting over two hours at Wheel Abraider, the incinerator at Millbury where the trash is dumped. This, again, is compounding since Thursday is our longest route. Waste Management had seven trucks on the route on Friday to complete Thursday's recycling as well as Friday's at that time. Just as a reminder to the community, please make sure that all items at their curb are no later than 7:00 a.m. each day, and only recyclable, acceptable materials on those correct weeks. And we cite the website where that can be located, and there's many pamphlets throughout town buildings that can be obtained if necessary. Again, times of collection may change, but your days of the week will not change at this time." Again, this is written by Town Manager Mizikar that he apologizes to the residents for any inconveniences he's caused and appreciates the patience of the residents while we transition through this work. Please be assured that he will do everything in his power, and our staff will do everything in our power to ensure that the service is what residents expect. I don't know if any Board members have any comments related to that. I do have another few announcements after that, but I'll pause this time.
Yeah, I do. Just so the residents understand, if your recycling is passed over, there will be some type of label tag put on the bin. So I mean, people can, if they go out and look at the bin, they can understand if, A, it hadn't been picked up yet, or B, if it failed to meet the standards. So in all cases, if something's not right and they won't accept the recycled material, there will be some kind of document left, correct?
So I'll clarify that a little bit. So the first two weeks, everything was tagged that was not acceptable. So if you had put out paper and cardboard on a plastic and aluminum glass week, that was tagged. Because we are now a fourth week into the program, they won't be tagging if you're out on a wrong week with your paper. They will be tagging if you have plastic bags in your recyclables, or coat hangers, or something that is not a material that is accepted. That is my understanding from speaking with them today.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a concern, Madam Chairman. If they've needed more trucks to accomplish a task that they should know, given their national and international scope, what level of assurance do we have that they won't come back seeking additional compensation? Because they, clearly, their performance today has been abysmal. It's not rocket science, and yet they somehow bid on a, bid on a proposal that has been basically consisting of the same routes and pickup for years, and yet couldn't pull it off. Do we have any sense of how they're going to make this work in terms of a longer-term, make it a non-event again?
Well, I can tell you that the split-body trucks that they were supposed to deploy on day one were delayed in ordering and delayed on delivery. We were assured that the split-body trucks would alleviate this delay, so I think that that's one of the mechanisms that we need to see play out when those trucks do come into play. We are currently reviewing every aspect of the contract related to that.
No, I know, I realize you, we are doing our part. My dismay is with them and their inability to do what they do nationally. Any idea when those trucks are going to arrive?
I do not have any information at this time, but I will let the word go.
They haven't been able to tell us?
They may have. I was not involved in the meetings last week, so I was not briefed on that.
Hmm. I just wonder when, in my view, they have this week to show they can actually do it, and next week to prove that they can do it. Or we should quickly just cut our losses and move on. And I'll wait to hear comments from my colleagues.
I have just a couple of thoughts. I agree with everything that my colleagues have said up until now. I think it's extremely frustrating for the residents when trash and recycling, which is something you should not have to think about, isn't being taken off the curb in a timely fashion. I know that many people are calling Waste Management. I think that they're, once they get through the customer service with representative for the customer service, they're being told that they have a ticket, and then still the recycling or the trash doesn't get picked up. My bigger concern is making sure the trash is off the road because it's a public health issue, especially when the warm temperatures. And I'm glad that they were able to get everything picked up on Friday before the really hot weather came in on Saturday. But again, as Selectman Kane said, they should have known what they were getting into. I know that they drove the routes. I know that they said they did their due diligence. But to not be picking up the trash, which is just their basic function, or the recycling, it's extremely frustrating, not only for the residents, but for us as a board, because we are also residents. So I know I had trouble getting my recycling picked up on the Friday route. I know you on a Thursday route. We just want to really make sure that they understand that this is a poor reflection on our decision to move forward with their contract, and we really do expect some improvement.
And I understand that Selectman DePaolo was in on the meeting on Friday, so they do understand this. I believe they do understand the severity of it with that presence being there at the meeting.
Very good. Thank you.
So if I may move on to just a few more announcements. I'm proud to announce that Mass Development has issued the Town of Shrewsbury a grant for $25,000 to create a request for proposal for developers to respond to related to the Beal School at One Maple Avenue. This is a project that the town has been working on for a number of years, most recently with the Beal Reuse Committee. And I understand that your Board met with the Beal Reuse Committee. ... understandings related to the visioning study that we also received a proposal from Mass Development on, so I'd like to congratulate the town on receiving that. There was an announcement today that we have a wayfinding committee that's being formed that's come out of a grant from Mass Downtown Initiative for the Town Center, and we're looking for one member of the community to serve on that committee. So that is posted to the website and other social media outlets if anyone is interested in serving on that committee. It's about a five-month commitment. Update on roadwork for paving projects. Mr. Howland was in a few weeks ago to ask for road closures for Lake Street, Francis Avenue, and South Street, and just wanted to give some updates on the timing of that. This week, Lake Street has been closed on and off for drainage work between Route 140, which is Grafton Street, and Route 9. They'll continue that drainage work throughout this week. Next week, they'll be lowering and plating structures, which they don't anticipate having to close the road. And then soon after that, they'll be reclaiming and repaving the roadway, probably the 1st of August or so forth. So Lake Street. Francis Avenue, next week they'll be working, excuse me, the end of this weekend, next week they'll be working on lowering and plating the structures where roadway will not be needed to be closed. And then next week, the week of 7/29, we anticipate the reclamation and repaving of Francis Avenue. And then finally, South Street, south of Route 20. Again, this week they'll be lowering and plating the structures, and next week, reclamation and repaving, which closures may be required at that time. Please understand that this is all weather-dependent, so the schedule may change slightly, but we'll be updating the website and other outlets as necessary for residents to understand what's going on. So we hope that by the middle of August, all of these roads will have new surfaces on them.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
Kristin, could you go back to your earlier report on the grant?
Sure.
How many grants? Is this the third grant in and around the center that we've received in the past 18 months or so?
This is actually the fourth grant. So the first grant we received was a parking analysis grant. The second was the wayfinding. The third was the visioning for the Town Center and Beal proper. And then this is the fourth with the RFP for Beal.
Now, how were you able to roll all of those together, to the extent they can be, if you will, almost threaded together for one better outcome?
So we have been able to play off one another. So for example, with the parking analysis grant, we rolled that directly into the visioning study of what's requested or required or needed in terms of Town Center for parking. We rolled directly the visioning study into this request for proposal grant, as that focused on Beal proper in quite a significant fashion in that report. And then the wayfinding overall is the look and the feel of the Town Center, so we think that that's overarching for the visioning session as well.
Good. How do you see any of those informing the ultimate reuse of Beal? Because my concern is if you apply the strict parking regulations, you might box yourself out of a creative reuse or cause the certain demise of the ball field. It's going to be a balancing act.
So in the visioning study, our consultant requested, excuse me, prepared, proposed zoning for the Town Center overall. So the planning department, the building inspector's office, and other town staff has been working to mold that proposed zoning together, perhaps to come to town meeting in May for an overall Town Center rezoning project that would not prohibit or limit parking in any sense in overall Town Center and Beal specifically.
When you talk about new zoning for that area, what is the area geographically from?
So we're talking about, from north, a Prospect Park to the north. I believe it's Municipal Drive and Grafton Street to the south, the Town Hall to the west, and about the St. Mary's area to the east.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any comments? You all set?
All right, all set.
Good?
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. It is past 7:05, so we can move on to our public hearing. We are holding a public hearing to review the new master plan for Centec Park North in accordance with Mass General Law Section 20 of Chapter 493 of the Acts of 2002. We have members of the SDC with us here tonight to give a brief presentation, and then we will allow for Board comment, questions, and then public comment. So I invite you up to the table. When you're settled, if you could just introduce yourselves.
No, I don't mind. Thank you.
Page down.
Yep.
Need my glasses on. My name is Richard Ricker, and we're here with the, our committee, Pat Convery, Lisa Cassett, Julie Holstrom, and Deana Nichols. And we're here to discuss with you for your hearing pursuant to Mass General Laws, to review the proposed master plan and marketing study that has been done for Centec North. Let's see. I don't know how to do this. Page down. As you, if it's all right with you, we'll go through a brief history of the property. As you will recall, in 2001, the master plan for the town identified this site as an important site for industrial development. Thereafter, or about the same time, the property owner of what was formerly known as the Allen Farm entered into an agreement with Avalon Bay for the development of 600 rental units. Thereafter, and because the property was in Chapter 61A land, designated as 61A land, the town had to write a first refusal, which it exercised in 2002 for the sum of $6.1 About the same time, the town meeting voted to file legislation to create the Shrewsbury Development Corporation to oversee the development of the land. We are here representing the Shrewsbury Development Corporation. The zoning was changed from limited industrial to rural B, and rural B to office research. And the Development Corporation identified goals for the property to be developed. Three major goals were to strengthen the non-residential tax base and preserve this large parcel for industrial and commercial use, to create good jobs for Shrewsbury for our citizens, and to promote a development that protects and respects the interests of the neighbors. In 2004, as part of the planning process, we engaged with WBTC in a market study report, which was put forward. The property was designated as a 40, Chapter 43D expedited permitting property, and we obtained a, the town obtained a $150,000 grant in 2007. Master plan for the property was completed in 2008, and some of you will recall that the Board of Selectmen approved that master plan in 2009. At that time, there were additional zoning uses adopted. I think that was the flexible zoning overlay district was established. And at that time, the master plan looked like what you see on the screen now. We did retain a broker in 2010. In 2012, there was a sewer extension up Route 20 to the project. All other utilities are available to the property. Officially, the property became a priority development site in 2012 through the 495 Metro West Community Compact. Shrewsbury completed economic development self-assessment tool in 2013, and the Town of Shrewsbury completed its master plan in 2016. About the same time period, the SDC was revisiting the statewide exposure and availability of grants. We do, and we did continue, and we do continue to qualify it as a priority development site due to streamlined permitting in this town. We qualify as a Mass Econ Bio-Ready with Gold status based on zoning, and the rating was improved as a result of the sewer access at that time. We improved our qualifications towards becoming a Mass Econ Market Ready Site with the broker and accessible sewer. We still need the MEPA approval to fully qualify for that designation. As you know, MEPA is ongoing as we speak. It's in process. Mass work grant programs are being reviewed. We have had a number of different types of entities that, over the years, have been interested in the site. They've come to the dance, but we didn't have a partner, unfortunately, in the end. We had data center, we had a data center, we had a medical device company, UMass, we had a solar company, other renewable energy users, we had recreational field users, assisted living facilities, warehousing, processing. Unfortunately, because of the lack of roadway infrastructure to the interior of the property, we couldn't seem to get it together to the point where we could make a deal with these different suitors. I would note, quite a few of these people went to other sites around the area and within the other Centec Park areas as well. In 2015, you'll recall that the town submitted an application for a Mass Works grant for the North roadway. Unfortunately, because we did not have the design plans and a private partner for the development, that grant application was unsuccessful. We submitted an application for site readiness grant for design of the North roadway in 2016. That was also unsuccessful due to the fact that, at that time, the state apparently was looking for smaller projects than what we had envisioned. We submitted a, the town submitted a grant for a second round of site assessment readiness grant and received $302,000 for design and permitting of the North roadway. At the same time, the town performed additional due diligence. As you know, this property was put under more of a microscope, basically, in the Beal School relocation studies. And we applied for and were awarded district local technical assistance from CMRCP to update the market study and master plan for the property, which is before you. As you know, the Bowler Engineering has been working with us for the design of this roadway. What you see before you here is the new master plan for the property based on Bowler Engineering's study and site review and design. You can see that the North roadway is to the upper left-hand side of the screen. That is the roadway that we're talking about now. As you can see, there, so therefore, 10 years apart, there are two different master plans. The one on the left is the previous master plan, 2008. That was designed for the maximum development potential on the site. And as you can see, there was proposed 611 square feet of building development on that particular plan. And there were 66 acres of uplands, of total land there, and 45 acres of upland, which is what they estimated at the time. The 2018 master plan has development potential of 450,000 square feet, which we think is more realistic in light of the changing market conditions over the last 10 years. The North Road estimate, cost estimate, is not too far off from the 2008 estimate. We did not evaluate the South Road cost estimate as it's not on, that's not our focus at this particular time. So we continue to work with Mass Development and Bowler Engineering on the North roadway design and permitting. As you know, we've been to the Planning Board for subdivision approval for that North roadway, which is finished. The, we're currently preparing the DEIR for MEPA, local permits having been obtained. We continue to court potential developers and users in as many creative ways as we can possibly do, and we are continuing to work with a couple of particular suitors at this particular time. We're preparing, at this stage, to submit for the Mass Works grant, submit a Mass Works Grant application, which is also in front of you this evening. That application deadline is August 9. I would note that at this particular time, we do not have a firm partner, a development partner, for that application. Although it's not mandatory, it certainly is desirable to have a development partner. We are requesting, with the Mass Works Grant application, we'll be requesting funding for the construction of the North Road within anticipated cost of, and I think, Kristin, there was a range there, but it's about $2.8 million. As I noted, we are entertaining, or we're expecting to, a little more detailed proposals from a couple of private developers. We are just now looking at the district improvement financing alternative as well, although we have just basically been introduced to that as a group. So that is something that we want to look at further. We anticipate that the Mass Works Development award would be after a hearing. We anticipate, hopefully, a hearing in October of 2019 for that. So we're here for your review of this master plan and the master plan study and evaluation, and hopefully, we're ready for any questions you may put to us.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Board members, questions or comments?
Madam Chairman, last year, when we were looking for a location for the new Beal School, considerable amount of additional due diligence was done on the site to fully understand the growth of the wetland area of the past 18 years. That information obviously has been baked into this plan, correct?
Correct.
So in essence, provided there was financing and a will to go forward, this is shovel-ready, correct?
It's subject to a lot of shoveling, yes.
No, but my point is, we know where the wetlands are, we know where the issues are, we know where the infrastructure is.
Correct.
So relative to the general, money aside for a moment, relative to all that other due diligence, it's already done and in place.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, this is a public hearing, and so I will now open it up to anyone who would like to make comments or ask questions regarding the presentation that we just heard. I will remind you to please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone wishing to be heard? Sorry.
My name is Wayne Watkins, 57 Brook Street in Shrewsbury, obviously. It's difficult for me to tell from the map here what the location of this area is. Is it possible for one of the folks here to say, "This is Route 20, this is Route whatever," to do that? That would be very helpful.
Sure.
Since I have bad eyes, if you don't mind, I'll step away from the microphone.
You can go look at it, too.
And you can come up and look at it. So this is Route 20, and this is South Street, and Route 9 would be... And Route nine would be up here?
Okay. Great, thank you. That's helpful. I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Okay. Can I have a motion?
Motion to close hearing, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted? Okay. Talk about adopting the new master plan.
Motion to adopt the master plan is offered by the SDC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted? Like we've adopted the master plan unanimously. Thank you for your work, uh, and your effort, and I hope that you're going to be coming back soon to tell us that one of those dance partners is, uh,
We hope so, too.
Stay until the end of the song. Thank you.
We hope so, too. Thank you very much.
Okay, our next item of business is a, um, seven-ten meeting with Mark McLaughlin, proposed manager of Burton's Grill of Shrewsbury LLC doing business as Burton's Grill and Bar, one ninety-three Boston Turnpike, Suite four-one-one-zero, for a change of manager to their all alcohol pouring license. If you would like to join us here at the table, state your name for the record, please.
Mark Stephen McLaughlin.
Okay, and just a little bit about why you're here?
Uh, just to change the name, I took over as the new general manager there a few months ago, and Frank, the gentleman that's on the license now, took over the location that just opened in Framingham. So, we just wanted to make it correct.
Okay. And there's no other changes to the license other than the change of manager? The hours are the same?
Hours are the same.
Everything else seems to be the same. Board members, any questions?
Seems pretty straight-faced.
It's a pleasure to the board.
Motion to approve, second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, so voted.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Frank will have to come visit you in Framingham now. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thanks, you, too. We're going to move on to new business now. Item number seven is to review and act on the request from Jeffrey Holland, DPW Director, for the intermittent rose closure of Old Mill Road and Harrington Avenue. And this is part of the special permit issued to the Lakeway Commons, and the work is to be paid for by the developer, correct?
That is correct. For the record, Jeff Holland, DPW Director. Uh, as we've been coming forward, uh, recently with any, uh, potential road closures on both private projects but in town projects, on when we will have a road closure for a particular location. This location is the intersection of Old Mill and Harrington. The work is some curb work, which does not require a road closure, but when they mill and overlay that road, because, because it's in the middle of the intersection, uh, they would like to close the road probably be for four hours one day and four hours the next day. Uh, we don't know the exact date as we are, uh, waiting for their schedule, but we're also coordinating with the, the contractor on Main Street, because I don't know if you've driven Main Street, uh, while the, that contractor's working, they have closed a, say, one lane of Main Street detouring down Old Mill. So, for us to then close that intersection while they have the other closed would be a, obviously a major, uh, headache. So, we are working with that contractor to try to time it so we don't close one and close the other at the same time.
Questions?
Uh, just one quick question. From looking at the markings on the road, it looks like virtually nothing's being done. So, what is being done, Jeff?
So, we are, the, the design is to take Harrington and make it straight. If you notice the curve, the curb line now curves.
Yeah.
It does not follow the right-of-way line along with the stone wall on that side.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we're taking the stone wall which would be on the east side of, of Harrington and make it more straight. To make it more of a true T-intersection, even though it, not changing the curb line on the west side.
Yeah.
But that will be done by, uh, line striping. So, we have the curb line on the, uh, east side.
What's really being impacted, three feet, two feet?
Uh, it goes over probably four or five feet, uh, closer to the intersection, moving it east.
Okay. Thank you.
Who else? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the intermittent road closure of?
Oh, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, item number nine is to review and act on the appointment, no, that's not true. Item number eight is to review and act on the town manager's appointment of Diane Tenelli of Seven Eastern Point Drive to the Commission on Disabilities for a three-year term to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Motion to approve, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Okay, item number nine is to review and act on the appointment of three resident representatives to the Open Space Committee. This is going to be an eight-member committee charged with updating the existing open space and recreation plan from two thousand and twelve. The following boards have identified the individuals that represent them on the Open Space Committee. Um, from the planning board, we will have Joseph Thomas, Jr. From the Conservation Commission, Martha Gatch. From Parks and Cemetery, James Brown. From the Lake Quinsigamond Commission, Peter Collins. And from the Trails Committee, Susan Colwell. This board will appoint three members. We received five applications from very qualified residents, and when making these appointments, we try to consider the individual's background and skill set to find the best match for the committee. I know I also think about finding ways to involve people for the first time, not only to increase citizen, citizen participation in municipal government, but also to bring in new voices to the conversation. So, we have these applicants before us. Board members?
Chair Casaband, uh, uh, what, something you just mentioned is actually something that I was thinking of as I was reviewing this, uh, prior to the meeting. The board, I think, always tries to find some type of balance between, um, providing opportunities to bring new folks in and to let them participate in municipal government, and also, um, to have, uh, never to have a, a board or a committee with just all people who honestly don't, um, might know how government, municipal government functions. So, um, the committee appointees obviously already serve on other, uh, other boards because that's why they're going to be on this one. Uh, so I think this is a, a, excellent opportunity to bring, um, some new people on board. I note that, uh, and I could be mistaken, but I do believe, uh, three of the individuals have not served, uh, publicly in any fashion, whether appointed to a board, elected town meeting member, um, uh, active in, uh, civic organizations that have a great deal of overlap with town government. So, with that, um, I, I would like to move that the board appoint Paul Gannon, Jr. of Francis Avenue, Prajant Ram of Twelve Nelson Point Road, and Tom Seiwick of Mercury Drive, uh, to be the board's, uh, appointee, uh, to the Open Space Committee.
Second. Madam Chairman, just one thing.
Yes.
I couldn't agree more with John's observations. We, this board is, in my opinion, almost too much town. So, opening it up to three people who are fresh, uh, are looking for an opportunity to get involved is a great approach. So, thank you very much, John.
Any other comments? Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. And thank you to all who applied, uh, to serve in this role. Item number ten is to review and act to authorize the chairman to sign the Municipal Energy Technical Assistance Grant application. Uh, the Public Buildings Division wants to apply for a municipal energy technical assistance grant in the amount of twelve thousand five hundred dollars. And if the grant is received, the funds will be used to develop drawings and bid specifications for a new roof and air handling unit at Parker Road Preschool that would replace a thirty-year-old unit. Uh, we received this grant in the amount of five thousand dollars in two thousand and seventeen at Selco used to study green technologies at the water treatment plant. Ms. Lass, anything that you'd like to add?
Um, nothing further unless there's any further questions. Just one point is that this builds off of our green communities, uh, work that we're doing. It's not specifically related to green communities, but it is on the lines of the work that we're doing under that grant as well.
Just one question. What's the funding source? Did I miss that?
Uh, it's the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources.
Okay, but it's not part of the Green Communities sum of money?
That is correct. It's separate from the Green Communities sum of money.
Where, are we able to apply because we are a Green Community?
No, we are able to apply because it is in concert with Green Community-type work. Um, when we received the funds, uh, in two thousand and seventeen, I believe, we were not a Green Community at that time.
Thank you. Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Item number eleven is to review and act to sign the Mass Works grant for Centec Park North roadway, which we just heard a little bit about, but if you want to fill us in a little bit more, Ms. Lass?
Sure. Thank you. So, I won't go into any much greater detail, however, um, we did bring the board through the Mass Works grant application. Uh, this will be the third time. The first time we did try for, uh, the North Road construction, as you heard from the SDC, we were not successful because we didn't have design plans and we didn't have a private partner. Uh, then last year, we were successful in partnering with, uh, the Market Basket developer at Edmire Drive-In and received a grant for three point seven five million dollars for, uh, roadway reconstruction at Lake Street and Route twenty associated with that project. Uh, this year, we are before your board to request, uh, between two point eight and three million dollars for the construction of the North roadway at Centec North. Uh, that would include not only the construction of the road, but any construction management associated with that. We understand from our traffic consultants going through this process that any development on the Pod A, so the northern side that would be accessed off of the North Road, would not require intersection improvements at South Street. It would only require timing improvements at South Street and Route twenty. Uh, so that would not be included within the grant. Um, I do not have a completed application before you this evening, as I just met with the consultant this morning to go over major milestones and major completion updates. So, I will certainly, uh, provide that to your board in advance of applying for the application. However, the application deadline is August, uh, ninth, and you don't have a board meeting until August thirteenth. So, any developments that occur between now and then, I'd certainly update your board as necessary.
Motion to approve with a follow-up question after.
Second.
I have a question, too. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted?
Thank you.
Your question?
My question is, um, Kristin, as you look across town, it's a unique parcel of land that would somehow perhaps get a gift of three million dollars for infrastructure. Have we ever been approached by, uh, pet parties in town other than Market Basket to do some type of partnering with them for a Mass Works grant?
Not to my knowledge.
Yeah, okay. Depending on where this goes, can we make sure next time we perhaps look at some of the bigger parcels and make an outreach to them in the event there's something percolating that none of us happen to know about? Uh, granted, the Market Basket, uh, for a variety of reasons, is the gold, uh, level, if you will. They know what they're doing, they have money, et cetera, et cetera, big draw for other retailers. But there might be others in town who need some level of legitimate assistance, not within their properties, but on adjacent, too. So, if we could just keep that in mind for the next one, I'd appreciate it.
I just asked one. So, was there, do you know if there's a prioritization on this, if we had a private partner lined up versus right now just roadway improvements? Is there, is there, uh, based on the history, from what I understand, that the first time we didn't get it, second time partnered up, we got the three point seven five million?
Right.
Do you know if they prioritize? Is that something that could hurt us? So, who knows?
So, each part of the application has a certain number of points designated to it. I don't have the point breakdown, um, the Mass Works program has that. Having a private partner gives you some extra boost points, um, associated, but they also look at, uh, is your project fully permitted, which we will be fully permitted? Um, is your project in an area that's designated a priority development site, which it is? Um, is your project an area that is involved in your overall master plan? So, it's a myriad of, of things. Um, they also are looking at projects that have a housing and economic development component together. That's one of the governor's, uh, main goals, is to provide additional housing in the Commonwealth. So, there's a myriad of, um, of checkboxes throughout the process.
Thank you.
Just listening to you talk, you can understand why the, the grant was successful in the, um, that Market Basket. And why we're, might be having a little bit more of a challenge on the Centec roadway.
Correct.
But thank you for the work and be looking forward to the updates. My question got answered. Um, so I'm going to just move on to correspondence. Item number twelve is a letter dated July fifth, two thousand and nineteen from David Snowden, Management Analyst, um, regarding the waste, solid waste and recycling board brief. This is a one-week update on the solid waste program that began on July first. The board is now receiving daily updates on this matter. Um, I know I've been reading the daily updates. I'm just wondering, have you heard any feedback on the pink bags? Because it's been a couple days now.
Sure, we've, um, had some feedback on the pink bags. Some people are extremely happy about them, others are slightly confused, and we're trying to help them, uh, wrap their heads around the program, that it's not a waste management program, it's another vendor that the town of Shrewsbury has contracted with. Uh, it's a program to get rid of your textiles and other household goods that, uh, you may not want to throw away in the trash. There's a whole, uh, update on the town's website about that and other pamphlets available. Uh, and it's a totally free program for the residents, and the town actually receives, um, some funds based upon the textiles that are, uh, contributed, based upon the tonnage.
I've heard some chatter, just, uh, people wondering why we have partnered with a for-profit company when there are, um, private, or I guess not pri- I guess private, yeah, private charities in the community that could use the, the materials. Uh, I think the answer to that is, this is a company that is out to make money. Um, but at the same time, they're taking things that you couldn't donate to charity, things that are ripped or torn, uh, blankets and sheets and towels that maybe, um, couldn't be reused for something else. And again, it's just an option, another option for residents to keep things out of the waste stream that might be bulky or heavy or cause them to need to use more blue bags. So, it's just an option for people. Thank you. Uh, item number thirteen is an email dated July eighth, two thousand and nineteen from Tara Joseph, thirty-nine Browning Road, uh, regarding requests for traffic changes. She is asking for a stop sign at the end of Longfellow where it intersects with Browning Road. Um, she's also concerned, uh, because it's a high-traffic area during the school year, and it would be a way to regulate the traffic, um, coming off of Gulf Street. Her second, um, concern was with the noise coming off of two ninety and one forty where it intersects with Gulf Street, uh, wanted the town to look into whether it would be possible to put up some sort of a sound barrier or noise barrier. Uh, so we are going to send the stop sign request, um, to engineering and highway and so that they can install that stop sign at Browning and Longfellow. Item number fourteen is an email dated July eleventh, two thousand and nineteen from Derek Grelo of Struck Catering, one thirty Hamilton Street, Worcester, uh, regards to a twelve-C event at two oh-six South Quinsigamond, um, that actually occurred on July thirteenth, so noted. Uh, item number fifteen is a letter dated July eleventh, two thousand and nineteen from Lauren List of Mass Development regarding the real estate service grant award, uh, for the Beal School Site RFP, which you touched on earlier. Did you have anything else you wanted to add on that?
No, there were further comments.
Okay.
Can I ask you a question on that? When do you think the first draft will be ready for us to take a look at?
Um, so I have a kickoff meeting that I need to schedule in the next week or two. I'll have a better sense after that.
Who's the consultant who will write it?
We have not chosen a consultant yet. That, we have to kickoff with Mass Development, and then we choose the consultant after that.
Thanks.
Item number sixteen.
May I ask you a question?
Oh, sure.
I'm sorry. Will it likely be Horsley and Witten, considering they have all the experience to date, or do you look for someone to give it a slightly fresh look?
Um, I'll be looking to Mass Development for their input on that, as they've done this with other communities before.
Thanks.
Item number sixteen is an email dated July eleventh, two thousand and nineteen from Timothy Benz of Seventeen Hunting Ave regarding the recycling program. He's a Thursday pickup. It wasn't picked up on Hunting, not this past Thursday, but the Thursday before, and Waste Management did go back and get it on Friday. Um, he wasn't alone, it was the whole street. Item number seventeen is an email dated July fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen from Maika Davis, Spirit of Shrewsbury, regarding the Spirit of Shrewsbury two thousand and nineteen parade. Uh, she writes that the theme is game on, celebrating athletics and the Olympic spirit, and that applications for the grand marshal are accepted until July thirty-first. This year's parade is scheduled for Sunday, September twenty-ninth at one P.M., and she notes that there is no Patriots game scheduled for that time, which is great, bring out more people. And, um, item number eighteen is a letter dated July sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen from Kevin Mizikar, Town Manager, regarding the acting Town Manager, um, appointing, uh, Kristin Lass as the acting Town Manager from July twenty-second to July twenty-eighth, so noted.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I, I have a question. I want to drop back to thirteen again.
Sure.
Forgive me. I, I was looking at something else, and maybe I didn't hear correctly. We, we're sending this off to engineering, um, and public safety, uh, or public works and public safety, for them to review and make recommendations to the board?
No, for them to install a stop sign. No, for them to install a stop sign.
Has the board, but, I mean, the, I'm confused, and I know I missed the last meeting, so has the board already done, taken some action about this?
As far as I know, what are your, what do you?
My understanding, and I may not have the facts totally correct, my understanding is that the town manager's approach is that if it makes sense to put a stop sign there with the conversation between the engineering department, highway, and public safety, that they'll just go out and put that stop sign there.
Isn't that subject to the traffic rules and orders?
I believe it is. I will double-check for you on that matter.
Okay.
So perhaps we should technically offer just a further amendment saying that at our next meeting, we'd like to hear what the analysis was and what the recommendation is.
Okay.
Because I do think we need to make a, at some point before it's actually hung, the board has to take a vote as road commissioners to make it legal.
Incorporating the traffic rules and order?
Yeah, if you're going to be in a situation where you have to possibly issue a citation, I think that has to happen.
So we'll send it to Highway and Engineering for evaluation, and then it will come back to our board.
Police, the cops, police department.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else to come before the board in open session? If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So voted. Meeting is closed.
Next question?